Jack isn't an executive, so.
All right, let's. Let's call our meeting to order and get going. I want to be respectful of everyone's time. Happy Tuesday, April 26th, our last meeting in April. Can't believe it. I would like to officially call this meeting to order with a roll call vote.
Corey Evans here.
Jeanne Haley Dippel here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Carrie Thompson here. All are invited to join us for the pledge if you'd like. Got our flag here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I will read our virtual meeting language when we come out of executive session. I think more people will be watching then. But we do need to have an executive session tonight under exemption to, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. And this is to discuss the town manager's contract that we discussed at our last meeting. Do I have a motion to enter into exec session?
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dippel, that's.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, see everyone in there.
Genuinely do not know why it did what it did, so. All right, I just move Corey back up. When we see Jack, I don't see Jack yet, so. Tracy, just for safety sake, can you make Karen and Corey co-host in case we have a dropout?
Good idea, good idea.
That happens.
Cause I'm at home tonight too, so I think we're all at home tonight, so.
Yeah.
My service tends to get a little chippy sometimes. I don't know if everyone on the hall goes on the internet at night or something.
All right, I'm gonna start by reading our virtual meeting language. I think Jack's heading in here any minute. But hello again, everyone. We just finished executive session, wanted to read our virtual meeting introduction. Tonight's meeting is being conducted on the Zoom platform and also live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on Zoom, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Any members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by me. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant and all votes taken tonight will be by roll call vote. Any members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom and at my discretion, I'll promote you into the meeting. You must provide your full name and address for public record. Please note that comments on Facebook are not being monitored and the meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on 143 TV and our town page. All right. Moving right into approval of minutes. I believe we have three sets, one from March and two from April, March 8th, April 5th and April 12th. Any comments or changes you want on any of those sets of minutes?
None. If everybody's ready, I'm willing to move the minutes for March 8th, April 5th and April 12th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
I was just gonna wait for Mr. Creighton to, to.
I mean, he should be coming in here. He was just in exec session, but.
Yeah, I'm watching the attendees list.
Hold that.
Tracy, can you just send him a, just resound the link just to be safe?
I just resent them, the open meeting link.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see him yet. Corey, you're so formal with the last name titles. I'm the more first name informal style.
It gets a little clunky, but I'm for it.
Where are you, Jack?
Can somebody text him? I did just send the link, but.
I just, I had tried a minute ago and I haven't heard anything back. Sorry, everyone. I know we have a busy agenda tonight. We are trying. At this point, I'm willing to move forward. I just.
At least on the minutes.
Yeah, I. I'm sure he's coming in here, but we have people waiting in the wings. Diane, do you want to make your motion again?
Sure, I think she needs to.
All right.
Yeah, I made it.
You were halfway through. All right, so Diane moved to approve the, these three sets of minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dippel, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay, I'm still checking for Jack as we go. All right, so we did just.
He just popped in. He should be up in a second.
All right. Hi, Jack.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, but in the future, I think we ought to make sure all board members are on before we open a meeting.
We were waiting for you, Jack. We were waiting.
All right.
All right. So we just had our executive session hammering out the town manager contract renewal. I'm happy to report that we did reach an agreement and agreed on terms and conditions. We brought our town manager, Chris Senior, in at the end to verify with him. And we have reached an agreement on all this, which by the way, has been a lot of work by several people. I want to especially thank Diane and Jean for their hard work being on this subcommittee and our attorney, Carolyn Murray for her help and Chris for all of your help in these negotiations too. So the plan now moving forward is to get this final draft finished and worked up by our town council and, you know, rechecked by everyone and then to vote on it at our next meeting on the 10th. And that's how we're gonna move forward. So on our next, we will have that posted and available for people to see. And at our next meeting on the 10th, we will have Jean and Diane give a quick update on possible changes and just a brief overview of what we agreed on for the general contract, but the hard, the hardest part is done. I know this has been a lot of discussions and I'm proud of everyone for making it this far, so we just gotta cross the Ts and dot the Is at the next meeting. All right. Moving forward, we have.
I just want to say thank you too. I, it's been a, I really appreciate the thoroughness. This hasn't been for like I'm interested in getting something done. There's really just well thought out conversations, so. Again, I want to say thank you to Diane and Jean for the thoroughness and to the entire board. I appreciate the collaborative spirit in which we've negotiated this and, and the incredible successes that lie ahead as we work together. So thank you.
Well said, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Not totally official yet, so we'll celebrate again once we get the final draft voted on officially at the next meeting and approved. All right. Exciting part of the agenda. We have some new employees that are going to be introduced. Several people that we are excited to meet, welcome everyone. Thank you for waiting. We're sorry we're a few minutes late. Chris, go ahead and introduce our new people. We're excited to meet them.
I'm very excited to introduce a series of new staff members and that if they're willing to turn on their cameras, they don't have to. Cassandra is the only brave one right now. This is Justin. And I don't know, is, is Ryan, are you?
There they are.
Is Ryan, Ryan's not RK. If you're RK on the screen, Ryan, let us know if not.
Um, I don't see any other Ryans. It could be RK.
But if you are, just let us know by, you know, raising your hand. Oh, there's Ryan, I think. There he is. Let's get, let's get him up there. So we've had a series of retirements. I think the pandemic froze everything in place for a while. We've had a lot of people with 30, 32, 35 years, 42 last week. And it's been really important for us to go out and find people who are ready to jump in and I want to say that we're excited to have done that. So I'm trying to, trying to get Ryan up here, but I can't, so. I'm promoting you, Brian, if.
Whether you like it or not.
You're coming in, Ryan.
So that's okay. So in the order they're posted, but I'll say, yeah. And I'll, after I just say hello and thank and welcome them briefly, I'll have them all introduce themselves. We have Cassandra Thayer, who's our new assistant planner. We have Dan Mulligan, who is our new payroll coordinator, payroll and benefits coordinator. We have Carrie Waldron, who's our new administrator of revenue collection. We have Justin Scherer, who's our new communications and community engagement specials. And Ryan Smith, I'm trying to get promoted, but for some reason I can't get promoted up here, who's our new assistant to the town accountant. Welcome all and if you want to jump in, Cassandra, I'd be first.
Hi, Cassandra.
Hello, thank you for having me. It's nice to meet all of you.
This is very low pressure. If you want to say anything, you don't have to, but we really just wanted to meet you, so you don't have to have a prepared speech or anything, but anything you want to tell us about yourself?
Well, good, because I don't have a prepared speech.
Too.
I am from Plymouth, lived locally my entire life, so very familiar with the area. And very happy to be here in Cohasset now, helping out with anything that I can.
Wonderful. Welcome. Okay, I think Ryan is in here. Ryan, can you hear us? Not sure. Chris, we can move down.
Now, we'll keep, I mean, he's the, if you want to unmute Ryan, if you want to try to reconnect, Dan, you're next.
Hey, everybody.
Hi.
How's it going? What about myself? I born and raised in Cohasset and graduated in the year 2000. Last 16 years, I've been working private industry during back office mutual fund and ETF accounting and client service. And decided to make a career switch and I'm here now, payroll and benefits in the treasurer's office and it's been a great month. Really enjoy it. Glad to be aboard.
Fantastic. We're happy to have you aboard. Welcome home. Yeah.
Harry.
Hello. Hi, I'm Carrie Waldron, the new administrator of revenue collections and taking Linda Litchfield's position. I'm sure you all know Linda. She's been here a long time. I started about three weeks ago. I'm from Quincy and I grew up in Quincy. I have my real estate license. Before this, I was doing real estate, but my background is in accounting. And thank you for inviting me to the meeting. It's nice to meet you all.
Welcome, Carrie. We're happy to have you.
Ryan, if you could, you know, if you could turn the camera off, not, they can unmute and say hello.
I tried to unmute him. It might not be working.
Yeah.
We know you're there and you're trying, Ryan.
Okay. If he, if he, if he was able to turn his microphone on, we'll chat. But last but most certainly not least, Justin Scherer, new communications director.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, select board. Good to see everyone this evening. My name is Justin. I am the new communications and community engagement specialist here for the town. I'm excited to be here. I'm a former TV news reporter. I've been traveling, working in several different states over the last seven and a half years. I started work in central northern Maine, working out there. And then I was in Oklahoma for three years and then I was in a North Carolina for the last two years, but I'm originally from Western Massachusetts. Born and raised out there, New England boy, excited to be home, excited to be back in the state. And I'm excited to really get to work in the communications field and work with the town. I'm gonna be doing a lot of stuff and I'm excited to dive right in from social media to videos, to press releases, to making sure Cohasset is out there on the forefront. And I'm happy to take any questions. If anybody has any questions of what I used to do, I did create my own website, myfirstnamelastname.com. So if anybody has any questions about that, they can check that out as well. So I'm excited to be here and thank you for the time tonight. I just want to mention a couple of quick things. Since I do have you all in front of me, I want to go over quickly some Facebook engagements over the last seven days and quickly some Instagram engagements between April 19th and April 25th. We've reached more than 5,000 people in the last seven days. According to Facebook, that's up about 230%, which is wonderful. Post engagements up about 250% with about 1,800 people. And then I'll jump onto Instagram real quick. We're up about 29% on accounts reached and 271% on accounts engaged. So those are, are some statistics that I'm happy to, to send around some folks, to some folks over the next couple of weeks. We can do it every week, every two weeks. If you all are interested, but I'm excited to be here and I thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. And we're actually gonna have you on our agenda on the meeting on the 10th to talk a little bit more about communication strategy. As you all know, communication was a top bowl of the select board this year. So we're really happy to talk to you more about this, Justin. And I will say I've noticed a huge improvement in terms of engagement and just activity on social media. So it's really nice to see that already.
Well, thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
Corey, I see your hand.
I just wanted to quickly say I met Cassandra and Dan and Justin earlier, so glad to have met you all. Carrie, I look forward to meeting you in the future as well as with Ryan. I don't believe I met Ryan. I also wanted to just say, to just mention everybody and thank you, Justin, for your, that amazing work that you did for Chief Sylvia. That really was, I had to, I was looking for like, oh, who produced this and and I also appreciate that you've got the, the announcer voice, the change in tone of voice is really quite, quite amazing, but Chief Sylvia was such a, is such an important part of the community and having your work to put it all together like that really did him justice. So, so thank you from us for that. Thank you.
And yeah, we will be able to get in and meet all of you in person, hopefully in the next couple of weeks to see everyone's face in person. Jean and then Diane.
I just wanted to say hi and welcome everyone and I look forward to meeting you all in person. I was at a town last week or would have attended Chief Sylvia's going away, but I look forward to meeting everyone. And I just want to put in a plug for really strong communications outreach on two super important events coming up, town meeting and town election. So Justin, I'm so excited you're here to have all of your talent shine through to increase participation on that front. That's always a challenge for us and we look forward to working with all of you. So thanks.
Thank you so much. That is also up on YouTube. We've had some, some great working relationships with 143 TV. The link is up on our Facebook page and it's also up on 143 TV as well. So thank you.
Okay, Diane.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor it. Welcome, everybody. It's great to have you on board and I, just kind of the flip side, I know you're the town communications person for the municipality, Justin, but if you hang on to the meeting in the, for a few minutes, you'll hear about some of the really great community events that, you know, we have the Eco Fest, I believe it's on Friday, but just some of the, the annual arts festival, three beach minimum, half marathon. These are some of the things that the community gets involved with and really makes, you know, Cohasset so much fun to be a part of. So you'll have a lot of good, good material after those all take place.
Jack.
Yeah, I want to welcome all of you and, and you know, one of the things is, you know, we're up here on the select board. Maybe we're important, maybe we're not so important, but the work that you do in the trenches brings the government services home to our citizens. And that's very, very important. So just as we on the select board have a, a trust to our constituents, you have a trust to the people who live in this town. And, and you know, and I know you have been selected because you already meet that criteria, you wouldn't be here, but we always want to remember the people and, you know, you may be soon, sooner than you think, saluted the same way that Chief Sylvia was saluted. So just remember that. It's a long way away, but really welcome to Cohasset and we have a great team in this town. We have great citizens and we are very privileged, each and every one of us, no matter what our position, to serve a town like Cohasset. So welcome aboard and thank you for joining.
Okay. We will see you all soon in person and around town. Thank you for waiting a little bit late to come on and say hi to all of us. It really is important for us to have a relationship with all of you and get to know you and our town only runs because of our great staff. So thank you for being here.
Thank you all for the very nice welcome and, and Ryan, I promise, I'll give you one last, can you, can you turn on your, can we engage you? Ryan, 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 by the way, is amazing. He's, he's missed, he's picked up all of the financial stuff incredibly quickly. We promise we'll get, we'll get you up at the next meeting.
We're gonna find out what you look like, Ryan.
He's Mr. Behind the Scenes, so. But, but thank you, thank you all. And again, thank you to the board for the support that allows us to hire such great staff and to really make, this is a good place to work. It's a great community to serve and, and we're all very excited about these five and others who are recruiting to join, particularly from the courts. That's our next hot area, so.
Exciting.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Good night, everyone. You're obviously welcome to stay on and hang out with us at the meeting, but you're officially dismissed from your introductions.
Bye.
All right. Now we gotta bring in some more people. So next on our agenda, our joint meeting with our school facilities committee to discuss the statement of interest and vote on it. Let's bring this crew in here.
Here on. Camera.
Craig, is that your, oh, there you all are. Look at this. It's really hybrid now. You're in person.
Yeah.
That we are. Thank you for having us.
All look good. I like the setup.
Yeah.
Can you hear us okay?
Yeah, the, the audio is actually really good.
Good.
Excellent.
Okay, so just a little recap for the town. We discussed this in, at length with the big proposal that we saw at our last meeting, maybe two meetings ago, and discuss the statement of interest because the timeline here is critical for us to vote on it again. So Jason or Craig, I'll turn it over to you just to give us a little update.
Um, yeah, the update, the school board voted in favor of this committee submitting the statement of interest. This committee itself has voted to submit the statement of interest. So we're looking to ask the select board to vote on allowing us to submit the statement of interest to the MSBA or the middle and high school.
Okay. Are there any questions from our board for them? Diane.
Just a question in terms of the, because I, I know on the statement of interest, there's a form of vote. So I don't know if there's something specific we're supposed to say in our, in our motion.
I would just read off the, like bullet number one. I just turned that into a motion.
For the language, no, that's a good question, Diane, because I wasn't sure either.
Right. If you look within the form of vote, it basically, you know, specifies and, and you just mentioned the middle, it's the middle high school. I just want to make sure we do it appropriately.
Jean, I don't know if you have your hand up about something else or if you have a comment on that question. Oh, I think you're muted, Jean.
I think we can carefully read through the form of vote, filling in the blanks. And again, just to confirm with the school facilities committee, we're talking about Cohasset Middle and High School. And the address is, remind me, what, Pond Street? Is that 100?
No. One, yeah, 143 Pond Street.
14, 143 Pond Street? Oh, that's ironic. Okay. And I just, I have a stupid question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. It doesn't appear from this form that we need to specify, but I know that the question of rebuild versus rent out is still an open question based on all of the assessment information that we looked at and you're still figuring that out. I'm presuming that the statement of interest doesn't bind us one way or another and that it still provides the flexibility. That's my assumption, but I just wanted to confirm on that.
It's really gonna be up to the MSBA when they come out to do their field work, they'll basically determine.
So the MSBA will essentially place us in one direction or another. They might say we'll give you X amount for rent out or we'll give you X amount for rebuild, depending on their own assessment.
Correct.
Okay. No, that's a good question, Jean. Corey, then Diane.
My question for on the motion, I know the motion says we're authorizing the superintendent. Should we be authorizing superintendent or the superintendent and the school facilities committee? Or does it matter?
Superintendent, because he's actually gonna be the one that submits it tomorrow.
It's a guy, it's addressed from me and I'm the district contractor, so.
Thank you.
These are good questions. Obviously, we want to make sure we get this motion correct and legally appropriate.
I've got the language if.
Yeah.
Someone wants to read it.
Are we ready? Okay, yeah, if someone wants, who wants to make it?
Sure, I'm good if we're good with me. Okay, having convened in an open meeting on Tuesday, April 26th, 2022, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Cohasset Select Board of Cohasset, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the statement of interest form dated. Can someone give me a date?
26. April.
April 26th, 2022. For the Cohasset Middle High School located at 143 Pond Street, Cohasset, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Description. How should I word this?
It was so good up until now. Is that enough or do we have to have, Jean, hold that thought. We're almost ready.
It was described in. Are we supposed to put in here, for example, the in light of the deficiencies in the assessment previously done of the Cohasset Middle High School? Is that what the expectation is?
I may be able to help with this in terms of the priorities that are mentioned in the SOI. Would you like me to tell you those?
Yes.
I was going to recommend that in accordance with the recommendations of the school facilities committee report provided to us to write to the select board and leave it at that, because you guys gave us a large report on this. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the town of Cohasset to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
And I hate to do this, Corey, but right underneath the asterisk says, please make sure the priorities in the vote match the priorities for which the SOI will be submitted. So.
Yeah.
We've got to do this absolutely by the buck. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got Dr. Sullivan reading them.
Shall I read them to you? Would that be okay?
Yes.
Yeah, please read them.
That we're highlighting that the vote will be in conjunction with is elimination of existing severe overcrowding. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers. Heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in a school facility. And replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements.
Trace, you got the language? Okay, we can.
No, I think this is.
Okay.
It sounds. Messy, but if it's going to be perfect if we get this down like we said.
I'm sorry to ask you to do this, but I think we need to get absolutely right. Can you? Is there any way you can email that to us? And we insert it into the vote and we'll just have to do a clean vote from the start with that language.
I can do it right this second.
Oh, yeah, a picture is fine. We can look at the picture.
Yeah.
We have to match what you do exactly.
I would like to pull my motion for resubmission. That's fine. I'm totally for doing it cleanly. Just just for the minutes I will pull the motion.
In the screenshot you will see, you'll see the the priorities that were including highlighted and they have a check mark next to it. Obvious, but just in case.
Okay.
We're close. I think we we almost have it perfect.
That's sent over to Kerry and Diane because those are the two individuals who are unlucky enough for me to have their cell phone numbers.
Gotta love modern technology. I'm sending it to Corey right now.
I get it right. That's a good thing.
That meant I was out of it. Okay.
Yeah, you gotta do the motion again.
I wanted it.
Corey, I just.
A glass of water. Okay, thank you.
Yes, so Corey.
Oh, man.
How many zooms of cell phones do we need to get this motion done?
So Corey, I would recommend you read their their exact language plus. When it says in a brief description of the deficiency described therein for each, I would do exactly what you previously did as referenced in the report. Provided that, you know, the school facilities committee. But just to.
Hold up, Dan.
I just want to make one last clarification on the date of submission. Will that be the twenty seventh?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
The interest form, though, is dated the twenty sixth. That's what that's one question I had mid.
I mean, our motion is being made on the twenty sixth, so I assumed we had to do it for the twenty sixth, but.
That looks like a nod. Okay.
Might not matter. Okay.
Okay, here we go.
Having this again. We ready? Everyone ready? Deep breath.
I would like to make a motion which says, having convened an open meeting on. Tuesday, April twenty sixth, twenty twenty two, prior to the SOI submission closing date. The Cohasset Select Board. Of Cohasset, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The statement of interest form dated April twenty sixth, twenty twenty two. For the Cohasset Middle High School located at one four three Pond Street in Cohasset. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for an application. May be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Including elimination of existing severe overcrowding. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems. To increase energy conservation and decrease energy related costs in the school facility. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. Including deficiencies as presented this board by the school facilities committee assessment report. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any. Other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the town of Cohasset to filing an application for funding with a Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Flawless, Corey. Good job. And we have a second. All right. Any further discussion on this motion? All right. Roll call vote, Jack.
Uh, Jack, right now, actually, I was trying to get in there for a little bit.
Other discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's important that the citizens should know that this starts a process to of evaluation. That it could be curtailed later on, but this starts us in into a queue. For funding. And whichever way we end up going, I think the consensus around town is that there is going to be significant funding required for our schools in one way or another. So this opens the door. So we are in line for the substantial funding that we're going to need. And we'll need that funding whichever way we go. So people should. Understand what this is all about. You know, that being said, Jack Creighton votes aye.
Ray Evans, I thank you guys for your work on this.
Jean Haley Dipple votes aye as well, and I thank you, the committee, for moving so quickly, efficiently, and professionally to address. The very real pressing needs of our school facilities and hopefully begin this path.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Proud to proud to give you a unanimous vote, school facilities. Thank you so much. I'm glad we're making it in in time for this deadline.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
All right.
Well done. Well done, school facilities. Very well done. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
All right. That's a big step and an exciting motion. I'm very happy about that. All right, moving on to licenses, permits, and events. I know several of you have been waiting a little longer than you thought. So thank you. We have several events and. Permits to talk about. First one is with Lenny's. Lenny's Hideaway, they have a change of premises request for outdoor dining. And Stephanie, there you are. Hi.
Hi.
Want to say, Stephanie, I'm very sad I missed your Taylor Swift event. I hope you have another one.
I know we have. It's.
The select board directly.
I heard it was fantastic.
I can't take any credit for it. I wasn't cheesy. Like I had to Google stuff before I bought it because I'm not a Swifty, but like I was like. I know, but our staff was amazing. They like were so into it.
I love that. I love that. Okay, so just give us a brief description of what you're trying to do for this outdoor dining situation.
I'm just trying to, you know, with once, you know, Charlie Baker, just Joe, you know, went ahead to sign. Into law to be able to extend the expedited process for the outdoor dining. We just wanted to take advantage of it. Last year, we weren't able to because. We were planning on doing it, but of course, then he announced everything reopening just out of nowhere. We didn't have enough staff for it. So we're hoping by doing it this year, having that extra space that we can really just. Make a, you know, make a nice dent, like make a nice little cushion for whatever comes this winter and be ready for anything that might lay ahead. I hope we're out of it. I hope I hope this really is the light out of, you know, at the end of the tunnel and not a train, another train our way, but we're just hoping that we can. Do exactly as we did in twenty twenty. With a few changes. One. We're going to have because we're trying not to spend as much money and we just we don't have the space for extra picnic tables this year again. So what we're going to do is we're going to. Use some furniture that we had from before on the deck that we then got rid of. To keep spacing in place. I think a few of you have seen it. It's more like a patio set. So on the plans, you can see the patio sets on the two ends. And then and then the picnic tables and then and then we have a the planters that actually will also act as benches and have a little table and just to accommodate a little bit more seating. The first year, we also had the service bar down there because we had, we just needed to. Be able to bring it obviously as eliminating as much stuff coming up and down those stairs as possible. So. We'll do that again. Tips, we always had it manned down there. We used walkie talkies and other things, so we always made sure that somebody was down there at all times, tip certified. And we, yeah, and then it's going to be this year, we're going to. Hope to do a little bit better. We have the we have the barrels. And then we have some planners, but we're going to put actual fencing around versus just the rope. So we've got some fencing to go around it. And there'll be the little entrance as well. That's there where people can enter and wait as well, and food will be served down there.
Okay, I will say the one thing that I think everyone in town overwhelmingly has agreed on the past couple of years is that they love the added outdoor dining everywhere. It was definitely a bright spot during the pandemic and continuing on. So I know that people in town really like. Extra outdoor dining options. Any questions for Stephanie? I know we saw her little. Permit of where she wants to make those changes.
Very good. Very good. I'm. You're inching a lot.
I've told, I've got the motion, so I would move to approve the request of RBLB Inc. Doing business as Lenny's Hideaway, eight Stagecoach Way, Cohasset, Massachusetts. To temporarily amend the description of its licensed premises to include the patio outside the entrance as shown on the plan submitted. Subject to the approval of inspection services satisfactory completion of the town's guidelines for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property. And parking lots, sidewalks, parking spaces, and all legal requirements.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ray Evans, aye.
Jean Haley Dipple, aye. Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Thank you, Stephanie. We're excited to see the changes.
Thanks, guys. See you. Have a good night, ladies and everybody.
All right, Patrice is up next. For the Arts Festival, everyone's favorite favorite event. Patrice, it's so good to see your face.
I know, I know. What a great intro. Thank you, guys. It's my favorite event.
I mean, we love all of our events in town, but just, you know, not being able to have this in person the past couple of years has been so sad and I. Knock on wood, I can't believe we're back to being able to do it in person. So.
Well, that's my whole intro. We're back. Yeah. We're back. So my request is. That we are able to come back. It would be Father's Day weekend, which is our traditional timing. It'd be June. For reference, that would be June seventeenth through June nineteenth, and we would have on the Thursday before Father's Day weekend. So Thursday, June sixteenth. We'd have our preview party, which is our annual fundraising gala. So I did meet with the whole with also Chief Quigley is here. I met with Chief Quigley with the fire, with Brian Joyce from Public Works, just to talk about all of the things we need to do. I know that there are some differences this year. So while we plan to have it be basically the same, the common isn't exactly the same. Now, Long Street is a road. So Chief Quigley has said that they can close the road for us. Thank God, because that's where our tents go. And I did promise, I did speak with our tent purveyors to make sure that. We wouldn't be driving any stakes through asphalt because I know that there's new sidewalks there and it's all new streets. So they did guarantee that they can avoid that and everything can be staked in the grass. We're also repositioning. Because there's parking now on Main Street. So we are repositioning where our food vendors go. Brian Joyce did ask that we not have any trailers on the common. So. We're going to move our food vendors to Highland Avenue, and they're going to be up along that side. The biggest change in addition to those sort of logistics is that we're requesting. That we have a beer garden this year. Yeah, so you know, and I I know that you guys have already voted that in for Eco Festival. I pay attention. Our partner.
Started that slippery slope on purpose.
I know. So I did meet with Mike Dyer at Untold Brewing. They said that they are in. I know all of the and I did discuss this again previously with. With our with our pre logistics panel. So I know that we would have to have a cordoned off that we would have to have somebody that's checking. Licenses to make sure that it's only it's twenty one plus. And that the hours of operation would be for the beer garden. So festival would be Friday, one to seven, Saturday, ten to seven, Sunday, twelve to five, but the beer garden would only be one to seven Friday, one to seven Saturday, and then twelve to five on Sunday. We wouldn't be operating it on. Sunday morning, Saturday morning, rather. So there's, I did put in a request for four days of one day local licenses to cover that. One for the Thursday night party and then three for the three days of the of the requested beer garden. So those would be. Four special event requests, I guess. In terms of the preview party, if you don't mind me saying really quickly, a little plug. Our featured artist is so awesome. His name is Rob Gibbs. He goes by Pro Black. He is a mural artist. He's better known as the artist in residence for the MFA. So. I know, and I'm super lucky to call him my friend. I I worked with him at AFH for. Sixteen years, and that's how we got him. But he is an African American artist and he has really been. Lauded as as, you know, affirming and creating a call to action. With everything that's been going on in this world. He has a series called Breathe Life, which is. Not coincidentally titled after what happened with George Floyd. So he's going to be bringing images from his murals and they're going to be under our tent. Father's Day happens to be Juneteenth, so it's a perfect lead in and we can intentionally recognize. That landmark decision and holiday with this. So that's what's happening. I know there's questions and I'm happy to respond.
That just all sounds wonderful, Patrice, and especially that artist for the preview party sounds perfect. And just thank you for being you. Quick question and chief. Chief, I see your hand up, but so for the beer garden, obviously, it's going to be somehow roped off or.
Yes.
Yeah, people won't be able to just walk around the common with drinks, obviously. Okay.
We will actually, I'll be attending Eco Fest on Saturday, just to kind of. Mike and I talked about how.
They're doing a similar thing too. So.
So I wanted to see how they're doing it just sort of to get some ideas to make sure that it's really secure and we're going to learn from, you know, if it works really well, then we'll just use that. If there are improvements to be made, we'll we'll learn from that and and make those modifications.
Perfect. Chief, your hand was up. Welcome.
I was just, I know you guys are running behind, but we've fully vetted this. Patrice has been wonderful to work with, not as good as Diane. But no, she's been great. She's been very responsive and worked through all the plans. She's worked very closely with that traffic safety officer. We have a good plan, a comprehensive plan. We're completely comfortable with the traffic, the layout. And the beer garden. So we're good to go and would recommend.
Thank you, Diane.
So my question was going to be.
You just muted yourself. Yep.
My question was where the location of the beer garden is, but I see that now on the map. I'm looking at that, but.
Is that going to be there? Because because the food vendors are going to be different. So I was wondering if that was going to move Patrice.
So the food vendors are going to be, they're actually going to be parked alongside Highland Avenue, right, like.
Where the sixties are now.
Kind of like how the farmers market.
Patrice, I'm sorry about this. I probably was supposed to get ahold of you. You can stay with the original. The way we discussed. So it'll be the exact same. You don't need a power drop and.
Oh, we don't have to move the park. Oh, that's awesome.
Also, thank you. So the food vendors will be along North Main where they always have been.
Yeah, they usually are there. Okay, but.
So Brian Joyce allow us to bring the trailers on the grounds?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's awesome.
Just on the edge, on the very edge.
On the very edge, exactly where we used to have it, right? So there had been a concern about having wheels on the common, but if that's not an issue, then we'll do that. So Diane, you know where the picnic tank usually is, right?
Yep, I see. I see it. Yep.
But that's where the beer garden will be so that there that we'll have it pushed back a little bit so that there'll be people, some tables outside the tent where people, if they get food from the food vendors, they can just. They don't have to be twenty one to sit at those tables. And then we'll have a cordoned off area behind that, which will be the. Which will be the beer tent, but that way that the people who are, you know, enjoying a few adult, you know, beverages can also enjoy the band.
Good, good strategy there. Any other questions for Patrice? If not, we can, oh, Jean. Any other questions for Patrice? If not, we can, oh, Jean.
I did have a question about the beer garden and the amount of time, days of the beer garden, sort of on the common with the huge volume of people. It's probably the largest event we have on the common, and maybe this question is more for Chief Quigley. And it sounds like you're comfortable with it, and I just wanted to kick the tires on that in light of traffic, parking, huge numbers of people. Beer garden for six hours for four straight days.
Yes, so the um, the vendor, they're actually subbing this out to a vendor. Um, and it's the same vendor that does Eco Fest, and we're, we're very comfortable with this vendor. And um, they, they, they host many, many um events around town at the Light Keepers and different places. Uh, they're all tip certified, safe serve folks, and the people we've worked with in the past, so we, we have a definite level of confidence. And if there's anything else, I, I, I would tell you, but um, but.
I, I just wanted to check given the volume.
No, no, I agree, and that, those are my questions um as well when we, we uh, when, when they, they started down this path. And once I heard the, the vendor that they hired, I, I was good.
Jack and then Diane.
Yeah, hi, Patrice. Nice to, nice to see you. Um, just a little request. Do you think it's possible to get some kind of. Um, presence for Safe Harbor or some of the um homegrown organizations that really are. Are speaking to some of the chaos of fentanyl and alcohol and things like that. Is there a place where you can. Fit that in someplace in the um, in the Arts Festival?
That's a great question, uh, Jack. It's certainly something I can take in under consideration. I will say that in September. And October, every year we host an exhibit. Um, it's at the Paul Pratt Library. Uh, it's um curated by Anne Marie Wilton. And that is a safe harbor um, you know, specific exhibition, but um there is certainly an opportunity. That, that we might be able to explore. Uh, maybe for the young people, we could have a dedicated space in our youth, youth um tents. It's tent. I think that's a great idea, and I, I welcome the opportunity to explore that further.
Yeah, and the reason I mention is because of the good work that you did with Anne Marie. So you click, know how to do it and, and do it in a way it's, and that it's not really, that it's not preachy, but it's supportive. So thank you very much, and well, that's why we like you.
Oh, I'm getting a lot of love tonight.
It's been rough not having events for.
I think it's more of that, but I'll take the love.
Been rough on so many levels. Diane and then Cory.
No, it's, it's because this is such a great event and we've all missed it um tremendously. Um, I, I just have a, a, a general question. As I, as I look more at this map in terms of the um, the, the, the parking, because there are things new. Now, normally the vendors would pull up alongside the common along North Main Street to unload, and oftentimes it was very hard to manage that. So they're gonna have to have offsite parking. I know the Town Hall parking lot technically doesn't become available till after business hours on Friday. You know, I just, I guess my question is, what are some of the plans for parking around the common? And in, in the, the trolley, I assume you're still running that. It's always a struggle to get people to go there, especially local people. But I think it's really important that we do everything we can with vendors and um the public to get them parking. Um, at wherever the trolley's running from. The music circus has a concert one of those nights, yeah.
We, um, you know, Patrice's has ordered a bunch of no parking signs, I think today, was that today, yesterday? I lost track. Um, uh, so we're gonna clearly mark everything, and uh, we're gonna have ADA compliant uh parking around uh. In Town Hall and the lot there. Um, as far as the vendors on North Main Street, when they load and unload, there'll be detail offices. There on, I believe Thursday and definitely Friday, but I, I think it's Thursday as well um to assist um those vendors. But the main thing is we, we, we have to keep that clear uh for traffic and um. Uh, you know, some of these things have to be fine tuned and some of it, you know, quite frankly, game day decisions, depending on what's happening around town. Uh, but we, we have plenty of help on hand, and uh, again, Patrice has been wonderful to work with, and uh Greg Lawrence, uh Traffic Safety Officers. They've, they've, they've been working hand in hand on this, so I'm, you know, I'm really comfortable with, with, with the, with the uh. With the uh, the beginnings of the final plan that they're, that they're developing.
And we trust you guys to make the game day decisions. Obviously, you know this event well enough, yeah.
We've already, um, I've already messaged all of our craft exhibitors um that. So one of the things that we had talked about when we were repositioning, and now we're re, we're putting them back. But when we were talking about repositioning the food vendors was that the load in and uh load out for our, for our craft exhibitors. Would, would happen on, it would be live parking on Highland Avenue. They would just get their stuff out of their car and they're, they'd move their car and come back. And that, that we would have staff on hand that would help escort them, bringing their things to their position, they'd park, park their car and go back. Um, so those discussions have been initiated, and um as Chief Quigley said, we'll be fine tuning that.
And we're, we're also, um, you know, I, I talked to, to Justin Schreer uh briefly, and we're gonna bring him into the room. So there's, there's great um outreach on this.
Yeah.
And gonna be closing down uh Highland Ave will be one way for non-residents. Um, you know, probably starting that Tuesday. Uh, because they have to put up tents and they can't, unlike past years, they cannot drive stakes into the pavement or the sidewalks. So we're gonna have to, they're, they're bringing in measures to uh ballast. Yeah, the tents, so a little bit different this year, but definitely workable and definitely doable.
Figure it out.
You will. Cory?
Yeah, this really isn't in regards to this application, but um, you know, uh, the beer tent brings up the fact that we. I, I, the Eco Fest was the first kind of event to not to introduce this novel concept, and now we have this. So I think that the board, I mean, I'm good with this event, but I think informally, I think this board should, before we approve any more alcohol events on the common. Really have a policy on what this is, loop in all the, all the relevant people, and also I think we owe it to our downtown businesses. Um, to include them as well. I mean, a, a beer garden here, we've got Blue Or, we've got Lenny's, we've got a lot of places, and if you're having a beer. On the common, which is just wonderful, it's probably not a beer you're gonna have uh downtown. So, so I just, I think, you know, again, when it was novel, it was one or. Once or twice, I think it's great, but I think if we're, if this is gonna be something that we hear a lot about, we should really unpack this and make a policy on it.
And I'd like to just um piggyback on that if, if I can. Um, at our Thursday night event, we are profiling. Um, we always have like a series of restaurants. We always invite the Cohasset restaurants first. And we have Bead Confirmed, we have Blue Or.
Great.
Um, Lenny's, it's a, uh, it's a staffing issues. She's letting me know later. Well, she said later this month, so.
I love that you always reach out.
Um, and the folks at Red Lion have had some kind of, there's been, there's a little bit of a shakeup in terms of ownership there, but. Cohasset Wharf is participating, so we are, um, we, we always reach out to our Cohasset partners first. And then, um, but we also want to live up to our name as South Shore Arts Center, so then we do expand it to other um, other localities. But I, I absolutely hear you, and I know there's a new uh beer garden coming in right in our, our little parking lot, right?
Yeah, split rock.
Yeah, Patrice, this wasn't about this application at all, just as we going forward, I think we just, the board needs to kind of think holistically on this. I mean, I love your event. Um, it's my favorite weekend all year, so um I'd love to approve it if the board would, would allow me to make such a motion.
Yes, please do.
All right, uh, I would like to make a motion uh to approve uh the event application for the sixty-seventh Annual South Shore Arts Festival. Which will be held between uh Thursday, six sixteen and Sunday, six nineteen. Including setup starting on Tuesday and breakdown extending until Monday on the Cohasset Town Common.
Do we have a second? All right, roll call vote.
Jack, right now.
For heaven's eye.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. So exciting. Thank you, Patrice. Can't wait.
Do we need to submit a motion for the one day liquor license?
It's not done.
We don't have that on here, on the agenda, I don't believe.
Oh.
Do we? Did you submit the final liquor license, Patrice? I wasn't sure. Oh, I didn't, oh, I didn't see that. Okay, let me double check.
So there's four.
I see it now, I see it now. Okay, you're right, you do have it done. Sorry, I questioned you.
Under license permits and events, and so.
And this isn't a hearing thing, cause it's a one day, yeah. You move it, Jean?
If, if, if we think this is properly posted, and you know, I, I think that it's. It can't, yes, unless someone disagrees with me, I think it's sufficient to encompass this, so um, I would move. To allow the Social Arts Center a special one day liquor license for. Thursday, June sixteenth from six.
Correction. It's, it's in the thing. It's Friday, June seventeenth, one to seven, Saturday, June eighteenth, one to seven, and Sunday, June nineteenth, twelve to five.
But I think you want it Thursday as well.
Thursday's the preview party too.
Yeah, and Thursday, six to ten.
I bet, totally my bad.
Can I do it all at once, or do I need to separate it?
I think you can do it all at once.
I'm gonna do it all. I'm gonna continue moving forward on the path I was.
Although, hold on, she, wait, wait, Chief has his hand up now.
Um, the, I'm sorry, the uh, the Thursday pre-event, I'm not sure that the, there's like, that, the, the days on either end of the event. At the load liquor, because when you hold an event like this, you can't like go to Curtis Liquors and, and purchase beer, has to be from a distributor. So those dates, the, the, there's not a permitted drinking event on Thursday or, or the Monday.
Well, we thought Thursday, hold on, sorry, Chief, I thought Thursday was the preview party.
Thursday, so the, the, the beer garden is Friday, Saturday.
Not, it's not the beer garden, Thursday, yeah.
There are two separate applications.
Yeah, so Thursday I had a separate application for our annual gala, which is called the Festival Preview Party. Yeah, and that's separate, and that, um, we've traditionally partnered with Taylor Tibbetts, um, who is our liquor purveyor. And then we have a tip certified um bartends, we have tip certified bartending staff. Who will be, um, and I, I, I have the, the name of them, who would be actually serving the alcohol.
I'm actually, I'm not familiar with the Thursday event at this point, but um, what I, I think what the motion is about is the, the Arts Fest. For, for Saturday and Sunday, um, so.
Okay, so maybe I do Saturday and Sunday, the one for the Art Festival, and then. Patrice, you can connect with Chief Quigley, and then we can come back and finalize the. And the beer garden is Friday. Sunday. Yeah, yeah, okay. So now I'm gonna move that we approve the special one day liquor license application of the Social Arts Center. For the Untold Brewing Beer Tent at the Annual Social Arts Festival for Friday, June seventeenth, one to seven P M. Saturday, June eighteenth, one P M to seven P M, Sunday, June nineteenth, twelve P M to five P M. From, and the hours of the event are six P M to ten P M on the Cohasset Common.
Second.
All right, motion second. Any further discussion there? Okay, roll call vote.
Jack, right now.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple Dunn. Diane Kennedy.
Carrie Thompson, I. And again, Patrice, you haven't ever had a problem with the preview party getting that approved, so it sounds like you just need to go over it again with Chief Quigley.
Don't worry.
It is, it's very simple. It's just I, we have to vet the uh whoever's gonna be distributing the liquor and talk about, you know, security and all that. We just, it's, it's two actual separate licenses.
Yep.
Yes, no, I know. I guess I didn't um say that well enough when we, I think we got, so many things were changing that I probably.
You're used only doing this one and not the beer garden, so that was the new one. Mark on your calendar for our May tenth meeting, we will have.
Got it, you got it. So um, Chief Quigley, you and I will connect later this week. I'll tell you all, all of our plans, and we'll come up to it, we'll.
Absolutely. The board's next meeting.
All right, does Diane have a question?
I do. There's one other permit that needs to be applied for, which is the entertainment license. So, so that would just have to be applied for separately, because you're having music on the music stage.
We've, we've never applied for that before. We've always just done like a general, I, I did all, I mean, it's fine, I'll absolutely do it. I've never, I just looked through all of the applications I've done in the past. I haven't done a separate entertainment one.
Look back twelve years.
You know what? We're all a little rusty after COVID.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're, we're checking each other here to make sure we're doing it correctly.
I will check that out. I had, no, I need to make a note of that, because I thought I did everything, so I am so, super sorry about that. All right, so that's a separate application thing? For a second.
We'll, we'll.
It's just the application, it's a, it's a separate application, yeah.
Separate application and approval.
Okay, we will take care of that, and I'll have that for the next meeting, if that's okay.
Yep, Cory?
I wonder about that, because in the application permit or application, permit application, there we go. In section H, it says, will any music be played? It's so described, it says entertainment license may be required. Is, may is the actual language here. Um, is it the board's discretion for such a thing?
It's never been required before that I can tell. I, I have, you know, I.
No, we're required for, you know, uh, restaurants and whatnot, but I'm just wondering, in this case, um, is this strictly necessary considering the language is may? And the, it could be board's discretion here.
I, you know, we can, we can take the discussion offline. I, I remember getting it for in, normally, like we would do. Farmers market, but you know, if it's not required, I certainly don't want to make them run through any hoops or jump through any hoops, so.
We'll double check on all this, Patrice, so don't start.
Okay, so I will follow up about that. Um, I certainly don't mind applying for it. I just, I, I feel bad if I didn't do something.
Don't worry, we're, we're good.
Okay.
All right, to be continued. We are so excited to have you back.
Yay, me too. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patrice. Talk soon, all right. Okay. Moving on to our three beach minimum for September twenty-fourth, I believe. John, I see you here, hi.
That's it. Hi, everyone. Good to see you.
Good to see you too, welcome.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks for, thanks for taking the time. Thanks for the opportunity to uh, to review the application again this year.
Yeah, of course, just give us a little sneak peek here. We reviewed it, same as always.
It is, it's kind of a rinse and repeat year for us. So last year we were back, um, you know, having taken twenty twenty off. For uh, for COVID, and last year we had a great year. It was, we were back to pre-COVID numbers with the number of runners and. Sponsorship and all that sort of stuff, so it was really, uh, yeah, it was a great year. Um, no real changes for this year, same number of runners. So we'll, we'll cap it at four hundred. The course is the same. Um, like you said, September twenty-fourth, we always try and do it the last Saturday in September. Um, had a chance to meet with Chief Quigley and Assistant Chief Dockery, so we, we should be set on the uh, on the logistics and the event plan. Yeah, it's uh pretty, pretty much the same plan again this year, but I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Great, and I know it went smoothly last year, so.
It did, yeah, fortunately, we didn't have uh, you know, any incidents or anything like that, so it's good. Got lucky with the weather too.
I know, I was saying, you had great weather too. We gotta ask for that again.
Yeah, that's it.
Any questions on this from the board, Cory?
I was just gonna make a motion.
Good, go for it.
All right, I move that the board approve the application for the three beach minimum event uh taking place on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Beginning at seven thirty A M and ending at twelve o'clock P M.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Jack.
Uh, Jack, right now.
Corey Evans, I.
Jean Haley Dipple Dunn. Diane Kennedy, I, only if Cory runs.
Carrie Thompson, I. That was easy. Thank you, John.
All right, that was great. Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
We appreciate you doing it again, as always.
All right, great. See you.
All right, and I believe Phil is waiting in the wings for, last but not least, our Memorial Day Parade for May thirtieth. Again, something that has been different the past couple of years, but I know we want to get back. Did see Phil here, there he is. Hi, Phil, can you hear us?
I believe I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. All right, we are back, Phil. I know it's been a weird couple of years, and I know this is always a really important. And powerful and special day. Day and weekend in our town, so it sounds like we're getting back to business as usual, is that correct?
That is correct, we've been uh, very busy uh, since March, actually, uh, it feels like uh, after two years in virtual. Purgatory, we're really getting out of the gates uh, quickly this year on the organization and logistics side.
Great, anything different or that's changed, I know a lot of us have attended this in the past, i- i- it it's pretty much the same thing that it used to be, right? In the before times?
Yes, in the, in the key dates, and I can forward to everyone, uh. You know, the, the big dates is on the Saturday, the twenty first of May is when the Healing Field will be put up. By the Legion and also Veterans Memorial Park will be put up across from the Legion also. Twenty one May is usually my drop dead to have all the cemeteries and all the memorials properly decorated around town, so that's, that's a big date. Uh, the twenty first, which is Saturday. Uh, going into that week that leads up to Memorial Day. Uh, Thursday, the twenty sixth will kind of be an informal kickoff to the Memorial Day Observance, uh. The Historical Society is gonna be hosting an event at the uh, Beechwood Meeting House, uh. It's gonna be the life of Herman Daly, who was one of Cohasset's uh, killed in action in World War One, he kept a detailed diary. Of his time overseas up until the day he was killed, and uh, they're gonna have a presentation on that diary. The Thursday of uh, that Memorial Day weekends to kind of kick off. The town's observance, um, Saturday, the twenty eighth will be the actual uh, Healing Field dedication ceremony at one o'clock. Uh, hopefully a little bit better weather than last year. Uh, so that's always a great event, um. Select Board presence is always encouraged or invited for that one, that's Saturday, the twenty eighth, uh, at one o'clock. And then the parade itself uh, is Monday, the thirtieth of May. Uh, leaving from the Legion at approximately eight o'clock. Going around to all the town cemeteries, uh. The big stop is we get back to the Music Circus at ten o'clock, which is kind of where the nuts and bolts of the parade assembles with the Deer Hill Band and. All the other organizations, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, all the other folks that participate, uh, leaving from the Music Circus around ten. Uh, we do the parade portion of the actual event. With uh, the goal is to get down to the harbor by noon time, so noon time is when the kickoff. Of the actual event is uh, down at Veterans Memorial Park. And that concludes by about one o'clock.
Okay. Thank you for that synopsis. Any questions or comments for Phil, I know a lot of us are familiar with this. If not, we can make a motion.
I'll move that we approve on the uh, various Memorial Day um, activities and parade, specifically the parade on. May thirtieth, twenty twenty two.
All right, second.
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 All right, all right, roll call vote, Jack.
Jack, great, no.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley, double die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you, Phil, for everything you do, as always, we are all looking forward to hopefully a nice weather weekend for Memorial Day.
Let's uh, keep our fingers crossed, and thank you guys all for all your support to the veterans.
Absolutely, of course.
Thank you, Phil.
All right. Another important item on the agenda, moving into. Some board and committee appointments, we need to appoint a couple of election workers. Uh, Elizabeth Howley and Mary Joyce. I don't know if. Kim Roy was on here, she might not still be here, but as you know, our election is coming up, election workers are critical. To making it run smoothly, Chris. Do you have anything to say about this, I know.
This is just the, the, Kim is just making sure that we're fully covered.
Yep.
So, so she's, these are two more bodies to ensure that the town elections fully staffed.
Perfect, and this is good leading into another fall election where I'm sure we'll need more people anyway, so. Any questions or comments on this, or we can make a motion to approve them?
I move that we appoint uh, Elizabeth Holly and Mary Joyce to the uh. Election workers.
Yeah, just as election workers, yeah, perfect. All right, roll call vote.
Jack, great, no.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley, double die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right. Moving on to our town meeting warrant, which reminder to everyone is on Monday night, very exciting. We, I believe, have one more thing to vote on from our, for Article fourteen, right, Chris?
Yes, so um, the uh, the CBC took a clarifying vote. Uh, and Jean can explain further if I'm making a mistake here, uh, after we locked the warrant, uh, clarifying that. They actually were authorizing half a million, five hundred thousand dollars for affordable housing. It split two fifty upfront and then two fifty after a grant agreement is. Uh, signed, and that clarifying vote came after we locked the warrant down, so the original vote was just for two fifty. Uh, but the CPC took a clarified vote, and it's actually five hundred, so I think there's any. Uh, that's really objection doing it, and just, we need to get your vote clarified, so I can put that in the motions.
Okay.
Um, but CPC did vote for five hundred, split two fifty, uh, and then two fifty with a grant. And I get, I got that right, Jean?
Yep, no, that's right, and the only addition was that it was contingent upon the execution of a. Uh, an agreement relating to. The CPC money.
Any other questions on this, does this make sense to everyone? Okay, let's do a motion.
I would move that we recommend a town meeting for Article fourteen, the Community. Community Preservation Commission vote. Um, relating to the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, five hundred thousand in CPC funds. To be provided to the Affordable Housing Trust, um. And. Subject to an agreement reached with them.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion second, any further discussion? I don't think so, all right, roll call vote.
Jack, great, no.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley, double die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay, the warrant is officially officially done, you all should have it in your mailboxes, by the way, yes, Jean?
Sorry, sorry to. On the warrant, um. On the citizen's petition for remote voting.
Yep.
When you read it, it refers back to Article twenty for the Select Board recommendation.
Article nineteen.
Yeah, I, I think that's a ministerial mistake, and so, I think. I wanna bring it up, because I'm not sure the best.
Oh, that's a really good point, I didn't notice that, you're right, because it's Article nineteen and twenty one that are the two.
The motions, the motions will fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear, including publicly too, so we could.
Warrant right here, no, I appreciate, it's almost like you're a lawyer, Jean, doing a.
Almost.
A very good read on that, speaking of the warrant, I did wanna mention and talk about on here. Who's speaking for which articles? Uh, I know that this is something we haven't always done in the past, but we did think it was appropriate for board members to speak on a few of them, I'm gonna share my screen real quick, I. Spoke with. Our moderator and Chris. And Cory earlier about who, which ones we think we need to have. Shared and spoken on, hold on. Me. Letting me share. There we go. So. We were thinking, just going through this, these are, and these are, we can debate these right now, the ones that we thought we needed to have people speak on are. Just our Article one, Citizen Employee Recognition, the Operating Budget, Article eight, capital improvements, Article fourteen, CPC. Article fifteen, the Town Hall Building Request, Article sixteen, the Land Transfer to Affordable Housing Trust, and then. Article nineteen on remote voting. So, just took a stab at guessing some possibilities for who could speak on which. Would like your thoughts on that, we kind of went through where we thought. You know, and with Rob Hillman too, for Advisory Committee, on where we thought we might need a couple speakers and. Where we could just go without having speakers, so again, we want town meeting to run smoothly as always. We don't want to take up too much time speaking, but this is what. We are proposing, and that I am proposing, and wanted your thoughts on this, I wanted everyone to have something. To speak on, so this was my best guess for it. For the Citizen and Employee Recognition and the Operating Budget, I felt it was appropriate as Chair to do that, especially because Rob, as Chair, will also be doing that. For Article four. The others are debatable. So, those of you, I I thought Diane could maybe do capital improvements, Jean, I thought you could do CPC. Cory, I thought you could do Town Hall Building, Jack, I thought you could do the Affordable Housing Land Transfer. Remote voting, I thought maybe Jean or Cory could do it, but it's up for discussion, so. Any thought on this?
Yeah, I would point out, I've been working with Tom Baker pretty closely on remote voting.
You could be an option for that too.
Yeah, my, because Tom and I have really hashed this out, and. I think that would be something that I would be good, because there's some things that. Some questions that I know that can be answered, that Tom and I have worked on. That I think people want to know, and I'm fully prepared to address those issues.
Okay, and just to clarify, Jack, we're, we're not speaking on the citizens petitions for this, and this is for our article, that our. Warrant article, just to clarify, you wouldn't be speaking on twenty one, which is the citizen's petition.
Remote, oh, okay, I'm.
Remember, we have, we have one article that is ours, and then there's the citizen's petition, so. We don't, yeah, so you'd be speaking on Article nineteen.
I see, it's a little challenging, this is first time I've seen it, um. So there you, we're not gonna.
Get your warrant out of the mailbox, get your warrant out. So Article nineteen. Is our article that we voted on, Select Board and Advisory, and then the citizens petition is twenty one, so this is only talking about.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So we're not gonna address citizens petition?
I mean, you, you could, Jack, in your capacity as a citizen, I think, right, Select Board?
Yeah, no, you could as a. In my, because here's the thing, if we pass Article nineteen, the citizen's petition, Article twenty one. Doesn't really matter at that point, because this is more powerful, you know?
I'm just, could, I'm totally confused, this comes out of nowhere about. Without any kind of, you know, request to the people, maybe we are gonna have. Uh, Select Board people speak on various things. And, and you know, here I see it for the first time. You know, I, I just.
Well, you're seeing it for the first time, because we have to debate it as a board.
But could you not have, um, I don't. Because it's just, you know, you, you, this list comes out of nowhere, you didn't say, we're going to discuss this, we're not going, you never. Indicated that we were going to take certain articles, might have Select Board comments. Um, and you just put a, a cryptic speakers, what does speakers mean? And now you, now you want us to discuss something that you've already decided on.
I haven't decided on it at all, and we're discussing it right now.
By citing the number of things that you put on there for Select Board discussion, you have decided what you think the Select Board. And you haven't.
Proposing, I'm proposing a slate, Jack, of what I think is appropriate, based on talking to the Chair of the Advisory Committee, our Town Moderator, our Town Manager. Cory, and everyone involved in figuring out how to make our town meeting run smoothly.
Okay, so.
So you're welcome to.
Also, I'm, Select Board members are not involved, I mean, why?
Warren, Jack, this is on the agenda, because you're involved in this discussion.
No, it's on the agenda, Carrie, because you said speaker. It would have been nice if you'd said that this is what you're trying to do, have this list out there. Um, I, I just.
Well, that's fine, you don't have.
Find it very, very disappointing and far from transparent. I might have had some thoughts on that, and I'm kind of precluded, because it's thrown at me at the last, at the last minute.
So I see some other hands up, let's let other members of the board weigh in.
Well, I think they should.
Made Diane and then Cory.
Yeah, it, it is standard procedure after the Troika meets to determine which articles should be um, are, are best addressed. Uh, at town meeting, and that, we've gotten away from the habit of. Speaking on every article, and it used to be that we would just kind of rotate through and go up and give the vote of the board. Um, and then that just didn't go anywhere, so, and I think at the last annual, at the last town meeting. A lot of the attendees felt like they wanted to hear some context on the votes represented. From the Select Board and the, and the Advisory Committee, so I think this is, I, I think Carrie just. Was providing some idea, usually the Chair always does the operating budget, um, you know, if, if there's something. Any one of us would like to speak on behalf of, I think this is, now's the time, I think that's what Carrie's looking for, is feedback on this, but it's, it's definitely something that. Um, is done every year, and sometimes it's done, you know, five minutes before town meeting, but um, so I do appreciate having the opportunity to have this discussion tonight.
Thanks, Cory.
Yeah, I do think that, that. When we did town meeting and we didn't, none of us spoke, I felt like it, it had detrimental effect, so I do like us presenting. Um, the articles, and I guess, you know, with Carrie there, there's one, two, three, four, five left, and there's four left of us. I'm happy to do whatever, um, so whatever anyone wants to do, I'm happy to do building Affordable Housing Trust, but I don't. I'm, I'm just gonna stand up and, and introduce the article, so whatever anyone else wants to do, I'm, I'm not particular to anything, I support all these things.
Thank you, Cory, Jean.
Um, I would like to do remote voting. Okay, I think that I've done a lot of work and research, including presenting before Advisory with Cory on this, and. I think that, um, and, and Jack, I think you can absolutely get up and speak as well too, and speak your thoughts on it. Um, I, I just have a lot of thoughts on it, and I've done a lot of research, including. Um, as it relates to other towns that have done this successfully, and the pending legislation that's also out there. Um, and so I, I would request that, although my, I would request, Jack, as well, and. This is not meant to preclude you from speaking your thoughts either.
No, I, my, uh, first of all, I, this is first I've seen of it, and there, that's a separate, you know.
Jack, it's the first anyone has seen.
May I have the courtesy of finishing and not being interrupted, Madam Chair? Thank you.
Go ahead, Jack.
Never called on it typically.
The. I did, my concern was number one, not proper notice that this was going to be discussed. So I didn't have a chance to think about things that I might wish to. Um, just on the very quick thing, it did occur to me that the. Voting on the um, town meeting is something. That I have worked on and, and listened and all that, and that might be something that I might have something of value. To s- to say for the uh, Select Board, so on the top of my head, I would probably do that, I don't think. I think Jean can handle remote voting perfectly well. Um, so that would be something that I would be that, so my, there's two things of, of my. Comments, number one is lack of proper notice, so I can be prepared to think about what my petition might be. And the second thing is that if there was to be a comment on um, Tom Baker's initiative, I think that I would probably be a good person to do that.
Okay, so you're saying you, that you still want to be on here for the remote voting?
And by the way, I think. You can do article, maybe this, Carrie, yeah, Jack, I, if, if you want, I will take the laboring warrant, Article nineteen. Which is not the citizen's petition version.
No, that's fine, I'm fine.
And then if you want to get up on the citizen's petition version, Article twenty one.
Yes.
We can add, and again, I, Tom Baker is, I assume is going to be speaking on his own petition, but we can add Article twenty one and put. Jack under there.
Right.
See, this is why we edit together to have this discussion, okay, so now I added nineteen and twenty one for Jean and Jack to kind of duo. Co-do that issue. Diane?
Yeah, I, I, I just wanna. Confirm that the, 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 the kind of context that the Select Board and or the Advisory Board members that speak on behalf of any of these articles provide. Is literally, you know, obviously, some context, but you're really there. But you're really there representing the vote of the board, the recommendation of the board as opposed. Now, in in almost all of these cases, I believe we were unanimous, so. Um, you know, that that's easy to to do, but basically, we're standing up to say the, you know, the Select Board. Voted to recommend this article five to zero. We feel it's a blah, 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 blah. And that's pretty much the the context that we can, we can give if we have some extra. You know, one of the things I am on the Affordable Housing Trust, um, you know, if 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 Jack would prefer not to do that, I'd be happy to do that. Um, I, like Cory, I don't, I'll do whatever I'm assigned. I'm happy to do it. Um, yeah, I'm in favor of all of these articles, but, um, you know, I might be able to provide a little more context on AHT.
On the affordable, Diana, the Affordable Housing Trust, I was, you know, basically on the Affordable Housing Committee when we started. You know, moving all this stuff forward and refunded the Affordable Housing Trust for true surprise this.
That's why I've had you on here, Jack. I know you.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate.
And if you want to keep it, go for it. I'm happy to manage the capital improvements budget.
Again, none of these are like.
I would, yeah, thank you.
None of these are emotional or personal. It's just the fit that came to my mind first. Right, so.
Logical choice, just.
Okay.
My concern is not with that. My concern is it would have been nice to have more of a a notice. But I think we're fine. I think as it sits, we're we're looking.
Looking at it now on screen. Are we okay with this as it sits for all of you to be prepared? And again, these are very brief statements. We're not going to be going on and on at town meeting, just the context, providing context. So everyone knows the homework they have for town meeting on Monday.
So I'm doing CPC?
Yep, you are, and and Article nineteen, Remote Voting, Jean.
Yep.
Okay. Everyone make a note of your homework. I'll send, I can email this out as soon as the meeting's over, too. All right. All right, that is done. Hopefully, we'll have a good turnout for town meeting. Remind everyone to come. All right, I believe that Cory, do you have a topic not reasonably anticipated?
Yeah, I do have a topic not reasonably anticipated. Um, one of my charges from this board is to serve on the, as class of representative. Representative to the MBTA Advisory Board. The one thing, we had a meeting today, uh, one thing that was discussed was the MBTA has put out. A draft of their capital improvement plan. Uh, and one of the things that the MBTA Advisory Board in their overview of this MBTA Capital Improvement Plan. They pointed out deficiencies in their viewpoint when it comes to electrification of rail lines, especially the old Colony Line, which includes Green Bush. As well as safety concerns, which which, you know, span, um, actual stations, but also crossings and fences, those kind of things. Uh, so, uh, the deadline to have a letter, uh, included in support of these concerns is, I believe, Friday. So, um, what I would like, what I would be asking for the, for this board is to authorize the Town Manager. Um, to draft a letter to be signed by the Chair. Um, saying that Cohasset echoes these concerns with, uh, the fact that Green Bush is. Uh, exposing residents to excess pollution and fixing that is a priority for the health of our residents, never mind the noise. And disruption of a diesel locomotive. Diesel locomotives are also way less reliable to like a hundred times less reliable, so it's also. Um, doing a disservice to our community when it comes to service level. Uh, I would also like the letter to point out issues that we have. Uh, with train crossings. We've had train crossings that during our, um, multiple storms have failed on us, and they closed down. Which means that for significant amount of time, our residents could not leave town without taking a dangerous maneuver through the crossings. So I do know that there have been some upgrades, but I don't have the confidence that they're, that they're substantial enough. And the fact that these types of things weren't in the report for their, this is a capital improvement plan, capital improvement plan, which extends to twenty twenty seven. So it's not included in this plan. It's not happening for a long time. And then lastly, we have fencing that was put up. I mean, our Green Bush meanders through our town. It kind of cut a line through our town because we built around it. And one of the safety features was a fence which in many places is failing or has completely failed. And been replaced by a patchwork. I've heard from multiple residents that have concerns over safety and that fence. So, um, that those three things, uh, you know, lack of electrification plan for the old colony network. Um, lack of safety, um, investments in train crossings and fencing would be the three things that I would like our letter to point out. As a response, um, to, for us to attach to the MBTA Advisory Board's response to the MBTA's capital improvement plan. That was wordy. My apologies.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that, Cory. These are all really important things to talk about. Any questions or thoughts on this, or Chris, I saw you pop on?
I just, if if Cory could just put that in a short email to Tracy, we can.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a an outline together, yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, Jean?
We may want to use some of the data from the outages, including how severe our outages are comparatively speaking, to get the point across of the safety concerns.
Because I was going to rope in the chiefs on that, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's such a huge issue. That's happened to me quite a few times, and it is.
Terrifying, yeah.
Yeah.
No, that's a really good point. Yeah, let's draft this letter. I think we'd all be happy to sign it, it sounds like.
I'd probably just have to have the Chair, uh, Carrie, sign it from from.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Jerry. Under forty eight hours, I don't know whether this would fit in there, but when we were talking about the Town Manager's contract. You indicated that we were moving forward in that, um, and you've said like we, as if it had been a unanimous vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. Green, can I just get a motion for my letter first before we move on to the next topic?
I thought we'd already done that.
But I just, it'd be good to have a real motion, um, so, um, uh, I would like to move that we draft a letter to the MBTA. To attach the MBTA Advisory Board's, uh, report regarding the the financial, the fist, whatever, the MBTA, um, Capital Improvement Plan. Outlining the three, the three points discussed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Right, sorry about that. Thank you.
Yep, Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you. And Jack, no, we're actually going to revote on the final document once it's all edited at our next meeting.
I I I know that, but what you had said is that we had agreed. Um, on the terms of that, and, um. The board had voted affirmatively, but it was not a unanimous vote, and I think that we need to clarify that, that's all.
Okay, so, I mean, yes, we took the vote in executive session and will then revote on May tenth. And the vote, I believe, will reflect that it wasn't unanimous.
Okay, that's, I just, I just wanted to clarify that it was not.
Yeah, it was we, as in the board, the board was moving.
No, I just want to, just when, just so, I I just wanted to clarify that, that's all.
All right.
Next thing is motion to adjourn. We don't have, um, select board comments on the agenda.
Right, that's why I had to pick it up now. Motion to adjourn, come on, Carrie.
Good comments, ready.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second. You're in the second, yes.
Okay.
Oh, you're second. Yep, Jack, great night.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Haley Dipple, die.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Sorry.
We will see everyone on Monday at town meeting.
Very good, too. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.